All right, going to call it a order. The Board of Education Special Meeting for Wednesday, May 19th at 5:35. You can start with the pledge, please. All right, as a result of COVID, we're holding this meeting in person following safety guidelines, social distancing, wearing masks. There's no public participation tonight as it's a special meeting. The meeting will be streamed live on our district YouTube page. So we'll jump into the agenda and the first item is the 2021 Annual District Election and Budget Vote Result Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. So let me read through this and then we'll take a motion in a second. So upon examination of the official reports of the election inspectors, of which the school district clerk presented to the Board of Education as described in the preamble's hero, the following is hereby declared to be the result of the balloting of the aforementioned propositions and election of two members of the Board of Education as follows. Proposition one, machine votes in favor of proposition 1,178. Machine votes against proposition 781. Absentee ballots in favor of proposition 43. Absentee ballots against proposition 33. Affidavit paper ballots in favor of proposition 2. Affidavit paper ballots against proposition 1. Void or blank votes zero. Total number of votes cast 2,038. For proposition 2, machine votes in favor of proposition 1,191. Machine votes against proposition 761. Absentee ballots in favor of proposition 40. Absentee ballots against proposition 31. Affidavit paper ballots in favor of proposition 2. Affidavit paper ballots against proposition 1. Void or blank votes zero. Total number of votes cast 2,026. For proposition 3, machine votes in favor of proposition 1,126. Machine votes against proposition 831. Absentee ballots in favor of proposition 33. Absentee ballots against proposition 41. Affidavit paper ballots in favor of proposition 2. Affidavit paper ballots against proposition 1. Void or blank votes zero. Total number of votes cast 2,034. Term of two members to the Board of Education caused by the expiration of terms, 2021 through 2024. Dean Kelly, 1,096 votes. Angela Terra Laboro, 983 votes. In accordance with the foregoing tabulation of the vote at the annual district election and budget vote, it is hereby determined and declared that said proposition number one was passed. Said proposition number two was passed. Said proposition number three was passed. Dean Kelly and Angela Terra Laboro were duly elected to three-year terms to fill the two vacancies on the Board of Education caused by the expiration of terms. So this resolution shall take effect immediately. Question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote on roll call, which resulted as follows. So before we take a motion second, I just ask to call the roll for who's present and absent. Mr. Bond?
Present.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Present.
Ms. Lewis? Ms. McKnight? Ms. Essing? Mr. Ror? Mr. Westenberg? So we'll take a motion on these resolutions, please. By Ms. Essing?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Bond. Now for the vote. Ms. Essing? Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Knight?
Yes.
Ms. Essing?
Yes, yes. My hair's too close.
You're right, you're on there twice. Mr. Ror?
Yes.
And Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
It's our first meeting yet.
Motion passed 7-0, Mr. Bond. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, next on the agenda, I just want to recognize our new board members first. Let me start by thanking the community for their engagement and for coming out to vote. And again, thank you for all the candidates who put forth their time and willingness to volunteer to be on the board. And with that, I do want to recognize and congratulate Dean Kelly and Angela Terra Laboro. So we look forward to working with you and we'll be in touch very soon. All right, next on the agenda is the Supreme Candidate Recommendations. Do we get a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion to pull it or do you have a feeling? Does it feel good?
Okay.
Do you believe if someone had to write the poll before you?
Okay. All right, so there's a motion to pull it in. Which item would you like to pull?
The appointments, structural one.
All right, anybody second that?
I'll second.
Part second, okay.
I just want to pull it and then we'll put it back on after you've considered it done and we'll discuss it. That's okay.
Okay, sure. Okay, all right. Do we get a motion to vote on the concept agenda, plus item B1? Second?
I'll second.
No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's your? Okay, so that passes 7-0. Now we'll go back to item B1.
I'd like to make a motion to table that. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask the mentor. But I didn't have to put those in email. I got it at 12:30. Table it for one meeting, if that's possible.
So then we will take a vote to table that item?
We'll need a second, please.
Part second, right?
Is this time sensitive?
Is this time sensitive?
No, this is the 2020, 2021. There are people who need it.
I think it could be considered a genuine point of view. I think probably you would need a motion to consider it and then a subsidiary motion is to table it.
Okay. So then, all right, so let me follow up on the first motion. So we had a motion to table, part seconded. So we'll put that up to a vote to table it. So all in favor for tabling this to the next meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? That's your? So that's 7-0. And now we're going to actually have a motion to this move it. We're good?
We're good. Second.
Second, everything. Just a second. It'll be up next. Mr. Business, please.
Good. All right. Now, next right on the agenda, our mentor presentation.
So I just wanted to thank all the mentors. Kathy Bergdahl for the elementary school and Christina Pro for middle school and Mike Sward for the high school. We're very proud of the mentor program at Valley Central. It's a big part of our culture here. Back, I think it was Sheila Lee Smurkley when she was here began this program. And you guys do an outstanding job. It's part of our professional development plan that we submit to the state. But I think that Valley Central goes above and beyond with their mentor program. And I want to thank all of you for your hard work. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Bergdahl, who's going to introduce the elementary school.
Middle school's going first.
Well, middle school's going first. I apologize. Christina Pro is going to introduce.
I'll be going first. This is my first year doing the mentor program and I just was rewarding. This was a rough year, one, year two. I can't imagine. I give them a lot of credit doing their year one, year two. It's such a crazy school year, but it's very rewarding. And I know we're really happy to have been part of our VC family. So I really enjoyed hearing their presentation. Paige is going to go first, and then Lauren. So it's going to be a little more challenging.
Behind the screen would be best.
I'm curious. Most comfortable behind the screen. There we go? Yep. All right, so for those who don't know me, my name is Paige Gumpell. I teach middle school math. So I did my project on, I'm going to read all of this, on traditional paper versus game-based learning and gamification in the middle school setting. So I did kind of struggle with picking a topic just because I really wanted to do something that involved kind of this culture we're in right now with students being 100% in school, 100% online, hybrid. So.
There we go? All right, yep, you're good. And actually, if you want to come here, you can see it here.
So this project caught my eye, so I wanted to really just do something that had the students with the technology at their fingers with the Chromebook, having video games being so popular in this generation. So I was like, let me do a unit on game-based learning and gamification, see if there's a difference between doing, you know, our traditional paper pockets where you use sheets on paper versus kind of turning it into the game setting.
You want to hear it?
It's not clicking. All right. So as you can see, technology is great. But students took part in content-related games that actually helped build skill and then other related activities that actually kind of helped them learn the skill rather than kind of lecture style. So some examples, they did markup and markdowns through gizmos. They did lots of competitive games, which they loved, through Jeopardy and Kahoots, which are always a big hit. We did breakout rooms where we learned some activities that they had to, you know, get through all of the levels to get out. And then we did a big project that involved coupons and money, and they kind of figured that out. The money was also an issue. They didn't know the difference between a dime and a nickel. So that was definitely, you know, a curveball in the project. Okay. So a little backwards, but this was definitely a difficult seventh grade topic in general doing percents. A lot of them don't go shopping with their parents or kind of understand how that all works. So I would say overall it was a success. A lot of students really well with the game-based learning. The problem was a lot of students weren't in the classroom. I had four students that were completely online, never saw them. So it was really hard to see if they were, you know, doing the activity, if they weren't. Most of the students I only saw two to three times a week. So this was just a little bit of a difficult activity. There was a lot of self-accountability and responsibility with it. So many of the students were successful. There were just a couple of students like three, seven, and nine that, you know, were struggling to hold on with the traditional way. And then when it came to the game-based learning, they definitely struggled with keeping up. But overall, overall, the average for game-based learning was only down by six percent compared to what we normally do. But I really do think the students that kind of fell, you know, brought the average down a little. Overall, the students loved the activities. They were so excited to come into math to figure out what we were doing today. So overall, it was, you know, a really nice change-up for them. I did do a survey at the end just to kind of see what they thought about. We all different types of questions. So there was some quotes that the students said, you know, on both views, some positives and some negatives. My favorite quote was a student said, "I liked how the games we did in class made the topic more real-life stuff than my parents do with taxes and shopping." So that was, you know, just a positive that they actually kind of realized like, oh, wow, this is real life, I'm going to have to do this. So that was nice that they realized that, you know, their parents have to do taxes and shopping and the coupons. So it was nice to see. So my name is Lauren Oster. I am a pre-family consumer science teacher at the middle school here at VC. I completed my education at Mount St. Mary College with my Bachelor's degree in Science with Business Management and Administration. I then went on to SUNY Swego to earn my Master's in Education with a Career and Technical Education Certification. And I hold a seat in Albany for our New York City Association of Family and Consumer Science Educators. I chose to complete my mentor project on a student study based on mindset and motivation. The student mindset can fall into two categories, that being a fixed mindset or a growth mindset. So it's versus growth. Fixed mindset would be your student, and you can find this in your brochure, the student believes that their abilities are predetermined, kind of they're set in a cage, like the brain, that you have it or you don't. Whereas the growth mindset student believes that achievement is impacted by factors under their control. Intelligence is developed. This is, you know, their mindset versus the fixed, where it's kind of set where it is or their dream for growth and training. Those categories also can promingle, and you'll see that with the results from the pre and post-test that I did with my students. So what did I do? To begin, I administered a post-test to my students. It was a 20-question questionnaire, collecting data about their mindset, ranging on a sliding scale from if they strongly agreed with the question, if they agreed with the question, disagreed, or strongly disagreed. I took that information and then chose to educate my students, both in the lab setting of which I teach and in the instructional setting of the classroom. So for the instructional setting, I educated them on hearing, recognizing, and responding. Those three components would be when you learn to, well, not when you learn, when you end up second-guessing yourself, that's when you're hearing that voice of the fixed mindset. So what you have to train yourself to do is to recognize that at that point you then have a choice. If you're second-guessing, use those thoughts towards your work to improve. The third lesson was in response to their inner voice, that second guessing is to switch it over to a growth mindset, meaning I may not be able to do it yet, but with time, I can continue to improve and learn. In the instructional lab setting, since there's two components in my classroom, I used the bridge to yet, which you'll notice you'll see in your pamphlet as well. It separates the process, process, the effort, and strategies. This allows students to begin to problem-solve on their own. They understand that failing is final, but not yet mean that they're on a learning curve, that there's possibility for growth for them. So a story that happened in my class that was in the lab setting as opposed to instructional setting was for them cracking eggs. This is in the food and nutrition component of the 10-week course that I teach. So students were getting frustrated, and maybe it's me being, you know, a new teacher, that I said to them, "Crack your eggs, it's part of the recipe." So the student cracked his egg, and with that, he had one all over the place. So the student, of course, is embarrassed because he's in a group of his peers and other students. And I explained to him, I said, "Joe, it's not a problem. We'll just clean it up. He hasn't mastered this skill yet." The look on his face kind of brightened his eyes and kind of realized, you know what? You're right. It's not that I'm doing this wrong, it's that I haven't, I haven't learned the skill to do it yet. In this, oh, I haven't even changed this, I'm so sorry. There we go. And you can't read it. So just keep on going. That's the story about the eggs with the nutrition class and then how the students were assessed. So I have the example questions, if we could read it backwards. Some of the questions, I chose about five of the 20 that I gave to the students for their sliding scale for what I did. The assessment results that I obtained from my students went from 0 to 60. So it came into four different components. From 0 to 20 was your strong fixed mindset student, so they're just kind of revving up. We want to change that mindset to have some growth mindset into it. That's your 21 to 33 scoring students. The next set of scores were from 34 to 44, which means they had a growth mindset with some fixed mindset intermixed with that, which is great because we're starting, we're seeing a positive change. Lastly, you have a strong growth set mind, with the next set of scores being 45 to 60. What I found with my students and how I changed the way I was teaching over the five-week period that I used this, was that the students on the pre-test fell into a fixed mindset with some growth mindset tendency. Well, this is great because then that means I had opportunity to change and grow as instructor with the students, which at the end of their post-test did work because they did step it up a notch. The average of what they scored on their pre-test was around 27. On the post-test, they tipped the scale and moved into the next quadrant. Between the uses of the power of yet, which is in the vocabulary list that I have in your brochure, and the lesson strategies on hearing, recognizing, and responding, I found the students arise to the challenge and take responsibility of their learning. I was happy with the conclusion and change. And this is something that I'd like to implement in my classroom moving forward, and I found the results to be very rewarding. So now, my name is Kathy Bergdahl. I was the year two mentor for the elementary teachers. I had Michelle Donovan and Michelle Bowler, who both teach second grade, one at East Coldheim and one at Berea. The mentees, all of the mentees have worked really hard every day during this school year, which is here like no other. And they excelled in educating their children through the varied learning and teaching environments that they were in. They were hybrid, they were online, they were in-person. And they also took on this challenge of year-two mentoring, to take on the research project, do the work for that, and you'll hear their results. And I just want to say, these are amazing professionals, and the students of this district are lucky to have such dedicated professionals. So first up is Michelle Donovan, of second grade of Berea. Oh, they're not practicing. Also, I told them to not do brochures. So my mentees do not have brochures because I advise them against it. So my apologies for that.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Donovan. I teach second grade at East Coldheim. Before I get into my project, I think telling you kind of what I taught all year has a big role in what I did for my project. So I started off this year as hybrid. I used Coldheim second grade, and about October, they realized there wasn't enough students for two hybrid classes. So I took on the virtual students for 100%. I had them until January, and then I had 100% virtual and a few students in hybrid learning. And then in April, I took on nine students, full-time, five days a week, and I still have 12 kids 100% virtual. So this has a lot to do with my project because the student that I worked with, he also did the same changes I did throughout the whole entire thing as well. So I took a few students, but this one that I focused on for my project did these exact same changes that I did throughout the year. So for my project, I had some students that were struggling to even come on meets, let alone make assignments and do the assignments. This was extremely struggling for the teacher because, you know, here you are, you're ready to do something, and you only have a few students on the meet. So what I did was, I was like, I needed to tap into those students that might have a limited home life support, some struggles that were going on at home that I knew that were going, and how can I help them? So what I did was, I decided to create a bond with them by having a three-minute conversation with them every day. I took a few students, and I would have my Mac meet, which forced them to come on one meet, and then all the other kids got to come off, and then those kids got to go into breakout rooms. And for three minutes, got to talk to me whatever they wanted to talk to me about. As long as it wasn't dangerous to them or someone else, they knew that it was kept between us. And this was a bond that needed to be formed, especially being 100% virtual because they had never met me. So I wanted to find ways to be able to show them that I cared, even through a computer screen. So we had conversations that ranged from friends to family to problems that were going on. And really, it was student-driven. I had conversation starters, and very rarely did I ever need to use them. For the most part, they were ready for their meet and to tell me anything for three minutes. This was a positive experience for them that maybe they weren't getting at home. Maybe they weren't getting that person to listen to them. It was not school-related, it was not math problems, it was just me being the listening one. Sometimes I interacted with them and I had my opinion back. Sometimes they just needed those ears to listen. And a lot of times, we forget that wrapped up in a full day of school, that sometimes a kid just needs that three minutes for you to listen. So the goals for my project were to increase attendance Google meets, increase participation in Google meets, as well as increase completed assignments. My biggest goal, I think, was to come on the Google meets and interact because if you're getting the lesson, then you're going to turn around and do the assignment. You're not coming on the meet, you're not going to understand the lesson, so why do the assignment? These students were giving me the love for learning that they weren't giving me in the beginning. So this project started off as just a little project that I had to do for mentoring and turned into so much more. And that's what my goal was. So you'll see, now that it's going the correct way, which is awesome, the results. So on the bottom is the pink before I even started the assignment. Okay, I created my data with one student. I did this with three students, but I only shot it to show one student data. So as you can see, out of 29 meets, he was only on six of them. And as you can see, the assignment completion was not even there. The next one is the blue, and that was when he was 100% virtual. His attendance for Google meets shot up tremendously. His assignments were still not fully. You can tell he really liked math assignments and writing. Reading was not his strongest, but you know what? I was getting the participation that I wanted. And in return, coming to Google meets, he was in return participating. I was calling on him, students were shocked that he was on the meet. You could hear me saying his name a lot, and you could see that smile on his face that he was getting it. The next one happened when he became hybrid. So he was in my room two to three times a week, depending on the week, and then he was virtual the other time. I think for him, the biggest thing was coming to the classroom. Now he had a face, even though we had a computer and had a face, but you know, with all technology and glitches and things like that, he actually had a face to put to the conversation with me. And he walked in every morning and had to let it all out for three minutes, and then I had him all day. That was great. The only thing that I did notice is then it kind of took a turn where he wasn't coming virtually anymore. So now that he's in my class five days a week, all day long, those conversations are still going. Sometimes he doesn't want to. Sometimes he doesn't want to talk to me in the middle of the morning, he wants to talk to me at the end of the day. And I let him pick those three minutes because it's just enough to get that off your chest. And he knows that whatever I talk to him about or he talks to me about, it stays between us and that's a bond that teachers and students need to form so that their kids can feel safe in a classroom. So as you can see, it, my project did work very, very well. It is not something I am stopping. I have continued it. I will continue it in the future. It was something that started off as a little project, but now it's a tool in my toolbox for teaching for years to come.
Hello, my name is Michelle. I teach second grade at Berea. And my project was focused on improving writing engagement, how to get students excited about writing. Reason I chose this project is because at the beginning of the year, you know, the words were coming out of kids' mouths, this is too hard, I don't know what to write, it's blank stares, I'm blank pages. You know, these are kids who missed a chunk of their first grade, they were coming into second grade and it was, it was a tough start, plus they were half online, half here. So writing was a struggle. And so I really wanted to find a way to engage those kids and get them back into writing. All right. So I started with a text called reclaiming reluctant writers. And a quote from that said, "Most classrooms are not places that we can expect students to write willingly and well." I thought, oh, that's not promising. But then I kept reading, right? It said, "Direct instruction is a difficult way to engage writers." So then I went out and I looked at the teacher blogs, the practitioners, what are they doing? What have they found to make writing more engaging for students? The things we found were collaboration, take out the stress, don't sweat the mistakes at first, right? Make it personal and high interest, give students the control, use illustration. That's what the people who are doing this are saying. But then I was like, I needed to know that that goes with the brain science, right? What the neuroscience, what we're learning about, right? So I went, read a couple of books, grasp, how we learn, learning through play, I don't know if you guys are familiar with those, but it was interesting because as I got going, what I found was that they were pretty closely aligned, right? Collaboration, soak that curiosity, ownership, learning through play, and then this little part at the end, interleaving and connections. I'm just going to talk about it briefly, but basically what that says is when you're able to make those brain connections in multiple ways, so maybe you can make something cross-curricular or maybe if you can link it to other experiences that they've had, it tends to stick with us, right? Interleaving just says, do it, let them forget, come back to it, right? And so those are the types of things that I wanted to build into the program that I created for these guys. So the first thing I did was I did a survey of my students' engagement and excitement for writing. I used the little smiley faces at the bottom because they're in second grade. And so you can see about a little less than half of the class said, when I think about writing or when I try to get started on my writing, when working on my writing, I feel happy about. That meant that a little more than half the class were either neutral or unhappy about writing and getting started writing. And then of course, there's that curious stat right there, when I'm done writing, we're all 100% happy, right? So I took that and this also included a writing sample and I used that as my baseline. From there, I kind of built a program based on the brain science, based on what teachers were doing in the classroom and based on what I knew about my kids. All right. So I created basically four writing projects. The first one is called Storytime. It's literally we flip a card, there's a picture, they go around the room, they write a collaborative classroom story. They're not even writing, I'm typing. So they're working together, it's collaborative, there's no stress, they're just becoming storytellers. Because to be honest, to be a writer, you really are a storyteller. And sometimes I think you forget that that's the, that's the fun part of it, right? And so we just built these stories and they had fun. And honestly, we were able to do this when we were in hybrid as well. So team one would write a story with the same picture cards as team two, then we would compare and share and it was kind of a good way to like bridge that gap between team one and team two as well. So after we kind of got more familiar, we started thinking of ourselves as writers and authors and story creators. We went to a create a character. Out here, we got a chance to, we introduced a learning through play. We got to have cross-curricular because we basically took leftover stuff from when we had created floats at the beginning of the year and created characters. So some kids created like type cleaner people, some people created a little Pokemon type thing. There was one of the hybrid kids took a Happy Meal and turned it into a whole story and characters. And so we took that and then we, we linked it to the reading materials, recycling, digital studies and all of those things. But we also did it with an art author study with Dave Pilkey and we made it a comic book, right? So now they have this character, they like their character, they're playing with their character, they're excited to put their character in story. Plus they get to illustrate that story, so there's not the stress of the writing. And so that's how they, they worked through that. They did a great job. Then we moved on to origami dog. Again, we're making those cross connections, the dog's a square, we have to pull the paper, now what type of polygon is this, right? And so we're making those connections and they've built their dog, they designed their dog, it's theirs, now they have ownership of their dog. They start just by writing down character traits, right? Then they want to write a story about their dog. And so that was the next step. In the end, we just kind of closed this out by going back to the story time cards. Again, that interleaving gives them time to forget what we had done, come back to it, see how they implemented. And I just flipped five cards and every kid in the room wrote their own story. And again, it was really amazing to watch the growth from the beginning of the year until that point. And I'm going to talk about that in a second, but we made, and then I made observations about both the student writing and their willingness to write. So one of the things as a teacher that I found to be unbelievably just freeing is that they're not hesitating to get started. They're much more confident, right? They see themselves as writers, they want to write, right? They're more excited to share their work, which gives them that sense of ownership. And when they own it, they want to make it really good. So they're not as, they want to go back and edit, right? They want to make those extra changes. So now their writing is becoming not only just, you know, something that they're doing for fun, but now since they own it, they want to make it even better. They're willing to go back and do that second draft, they're willing to maybe type it up and put it into a book. That's, you know, that's, they grew, they did. I added the picture in because this is them head down, working, writing. And the fact is, at the beginning of the year, they never all would have been head down writing like that, but they were, because they're happy, they were excited. So it worked well. I look forward to implementing these types of programs moving forward. To be honest, I've kind of continued this and we're working on writing a fable right now where they have to implement, they have to include, you know, a moral, the characters, the character traits. But then once they finish that writing, they're really excited because we're going to put it into a book and then we're going to do a puppet show. So again, including that play, making the writing an experience instead of just that direct, this is how you write, has really definitely improved the engagement and gotten these kids excited about writing. All right, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Storey. I've been the high school year two mentor for a long time. I don't even know how long. But I want to thank the board for taking time out of their schedule to listen to these presentations. I want to thank superintendent Coughlin, superintendent Sartor, superintendent Dan just again, for taking time out of your busy schedule to hear these presentations. And I got to say, it's been a pleasure to work with these guys. This has been the most difficult year of mentoring. They've absorbed schedule changes, last minute schedule changes, quarantines, and they've worked really hard and I'm really proud of them. And Ashley, you're up.
And I just want to quick say Christina and I want to thank Mike because he mentored us in both the motions hour first year. Very nice.
How many have left? Let's go to the rest. Oh, here it is.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. My name is Ashes Bogr and I teach math at the high school, grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. So a little bit of everybody. My project this year was on the effectiveness of guided classroom practice as opposed to homework on student comprehension. And this year has been challenging for all of us. And we're thinking about what I wanted to do for my project. I really wanted to incorporate something that I could use this year and for years to come in the future. And this year, the makeup of each of my classes from the very beginning of the year was hybrid, then we were 100% virtual, back to hybrid, and all the changes in between. So when coming up with an idea for my project, I really wanted to make sure it was something that I could do to reach both the students that I had here in person and those that were on the Google meets and remote at the same time. So my idea was to study homework and in-class classroom practice. Now, this is the book that gave me the idea, Mathematical Mindsets by Joe Boilhart. And it is something that I had read in college and I really came back to when thinking about the why. Why did I want to study this for my presentation? And two questions really came to mind for me. The first, is it equitable? Now, traditionally in class, we get homework and students work on it, they come back and we go over it to review any misconceptions and make sure that we're addressing them before we continue the lessons. The second question I really had was, is it providing additional effective practice? Now, on my presentation there, homework directly following a lesson traditionally falls in the tier one category of intervention. My goal for this project was really to focus in on the tier two and tier three categories of intervention, which came from time in class to really focus on those skills and practice them together and independently. So here's what we did. In the past, we had homework assignments. So what I did was I took those homework assignments and those problems and I transformed them for this school year. I made digital versions, I used whiteboard chat, Kami, breakout rooms, Nearpod, Everfy, a bunch of different platforms. And I tested them with all different grade levels at each of my classes. And one that my students, so this is a sample of their responses of what they liked the most, was they liked using Kami. And what we did with Kami in class was, is Kami is a virtual program where I am able to go into my students' documents while they're working on it live. So whether they were in person or they were on the Google meet, remote, we were able to communicate and we were able to go over those problems together and address any misconceptions live in real time. And Kami allowed them to draw, write comments, even voice comments. I got a voice comment one day from a student asking me a question and told him it was the best day ever because it was the first voice comment I had ever gotten. And I responded to him with a voice comment and we were able to have a communication outside of that time in the, instead of going into a breakout room. He was able to ask me a question right then and there and I was able to then respond. So in a study in 2015, the International Assessment Program came out with a study that said that homework did not have a significant impact on student learning. And in 2006, a different study actually came out and said that countries that gave more homework actually had lower assessment scores. So I wanted to test this theory. And here was the impact that it had on my students. There was a about 19% overall increase in their test scores from before when I did homework assignments and we went over them at the beginning of class and asked students if they had any questions. To now, now I'm going into their live documents in real time and working with them on these problems. And we've used breakout rooms where students are able to then work together. They can share one Kami document, so they're working as a group. Some students were here in person, other students were remote. And then I was able to jump into that Kami document and that breakout room and work with them that way as well. So overall, I found that building that time in class to really work together with my students on the practice, as opposed to having them do it on their own and then going over it together, was really beneficial for my students and me as a teacher. Because at that moment in time, I was able to address misconceptions and then kind of set up a game plan in my mind, how are we going to go over this and what can we do tomorrow to address these misconceptions? So this is definitely something that I want to continue doing for years to come. And my students over on the left, that green bar chart over there, said that they found that it was helpful too. I asked them on a scale of one to five, what they felt doing this in class time versus having homework assignments, how did they feel that it enhanced their comprehension? Thank you.
So good afternoon, good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Flower. I'm a teacher in the high school. I teach across subjects, social studies, mostly Global Nine, and I'm a special educator as well. So I did my project on collaborative learning groups, which is not a novel idea by any means, but something I thought would be important to implement in this very, very different. Students were mixed, obviously, across team one, team two, fully remote. And when, during the time this project took place, as a special educator, we did have students in five days a week as well. So there's a lot of students operating on much, much different schedules. My goal was to bring students together. The reason I landed on this project was I identified a problem. With everything, COVID has really just taken issues that were already present and put them under a magnifying glass. So students who typically didn't have much trouble, very self-directed, self-driven, weren't very much affected. And the beginning, in the middle of this year, it was really those students in the middle, in the lower end of the academic spectrum, that were having a supreme amount of difficulty. And I felt that the reason this was, was because they were missing the traditional aspects of school. Yes, access to socialization, being engaged in a way that you just kind of can't replicate through a computer screen, and peer-to-peer feedback. So I based this whole project that if I can drive up student engagement by giving them some taste of what normal school would be like, I would then drive up their performance. In general, collaborative learning groups, really if you can look at it through the depth through the lens of highly structured group work. This took place, they were in consistent groupings over the course of the better part of the third marking period, and they were grouped heterogeneously. So students were not grouped by their teams, they were not grouped by their ability level. It was really kind of a mishmash of all things. I really wanted to give students access to students who had more academic or content knowledge than they did, but also students who had different social abilities or were much more open than they might have been. And in general, the way that this took place really varied depending on the lesson, it varied depending on the day. For certain lessons, there would be a period of direct instruction where they would then break out into their collaborative learning groups, engage in an activity and then report back to their groups. And at other points, this would all take place through breakout rooms. And the other method was for extended projects, students would be given an inquiry-based question, steps to follow, and then a product to produce. So it really wrapped in a lot of different aspects of group work or ways that it could be carried out. And the most important thing was these groupings were consistent. Students were able to form a bond with their groups and it almost drove up their level of responsibility, not to, not to themselves, but to the students that they worked with. The way that this took place, really what I was trying to measure was three things. Number one, their overall engagement, they self-reported that. I give quarterly surveys at the end of each quarter on their academics and on their just level of engagement. So I used their quarter two before the intervention was put into place as the control for their level of engagement. And I also use their quarterly, their second quarterly or their midterm test scores and then that would eventually be compared against their quarter three test scores. So I believed that again, if they got this taste of normal education, of normal group work, of the closest thing we can get to, to working together, even though we're far apart, that would then drive up their engagement and in turn their scores. So to jump just right to the results, students self-reported an overall increase of two points, this was measured on a scale of one to five, with just the general question, how excited are you? How much did you pay attention for the lessons that we took, that took place in school? The second marking period, when there is a lot more direct instruction and independent assignments, students traditionally rated like in the middle range, they're so-so, they're there, they're, they're going to participate, but they're not really enjoying it. but they're not really enjoying it. But we saw great increases, particularly in the special ed end of the spectrum. Conversely, percentage points on their quarterly tests, they did rise. If you want a closer look at those graphs, you can find them in your brochure. The difference doesn't seem very great on that board, but that's on a scale of zero to 100. So roughly a score increase of about 3.3 points on their quarterly exams. So overall, I thought this was a very effective practice. And to say that I would continue to use it in a normal year, I think is an understatement because group work is a vital part of the classroom. But I think the way that it's implemented, as far as consistent groupings and developing that kind of responsibility to one another, was like a key component and something I want to use. But also introduce the shuffling of those groups quarter by quarter to see what works and what doesn't as this, the implementation of this strategy grows. The thing that I found the most interesting about this whole, and kind of revealing about this whole research-based project, was some of the actual verbal reports I got from students at the end of the third marking period. Hearing specifically the things that they liked. The chance to talk to their classmates, whether or not that was structured or unstructured, whether or not they had finished the activity and had the chance to just kind of chat, was something that they really enjoyed. Having the chance to talk to people, something that was really, really missing from a lot of our students' lives. I thought it was funny. I didn't take it too personally. Students did report that it was nice to not just hear my voice for the entirety of the period, but to hear from each other. And the most important thing was taking the pressure off of students that they don't have to perform on this computer where everything can be watched and monitored. They can see your little icon pop up when you're monitoring their progress. This activity really took the pressure off of kids. It didn't matter necessarily whether or not it was group work. The only thing that I found, the negative to this and something that I would want to plan ahead for, is that it needs more time. Traditionally, I found that you could fly through lessons a little bit more quickly this year because we were missing the discussion. So that was a little bit of a hiccup that I experienced during the first couple of weeks of this. But as we extended the assignments out and gave a little bit more time to this, students really seemed to enjoy it much, much more.
Okay, hi, my name is Amy Marr. I am a high school math teacher. I mostly teach freshman algebra, two different sections of it. And when we were asked to do this project, my first thought is, the biggest thing that I ran into with math is that students don't make corrections or they don't look deeper into their work to correct their work. In order to master math, you have to understand what you did wrong and keep practicing until you get it correct. Because the topic you learn today is something you need tomorrow. And what you learn tomorrow, you need the day after that. It builds on each other. So I was always allowing students to make corrections on what I called "classwork." And they would make corrections and they would still get the problem wrong. So when this project came along, I said, I need to look deeper into what's happening. And everything that I came up with led me back to the mastery-based learning. So what is your mastery-based learning? This goes back to Bloom. Bloom had introduced this, that mastery-based learning is an instructional approach where students need to demonstrate a deep level of understanding of a topic or subject before they move on to the next. What everybody in their studies had said is that it's intense, individualized instruction that will help students. So when I looked at my classes, I was able to use a class that I have that has allotted a double period. So they get two periods back to back with me of math. So that's like about 80 minutes of me, if they get. And I use that extra time to implement this. And not only that, it was a small group. Fortunately, this year, it was about a third of the regular size. And so I had time to work with kids individually. So prior to me giving this individualized and reteaching and instruction towards mastery-based learning, students on graded assignments didn't do so well. Maybe on the rated assignments, they've got like a 75 on those in-class works that I allowed them to do corrections on, but they were still making those same mistakes. On their quizzes, they got somewhere in the high 80s, which is fine, right? Because I let them do those corrections, they did learn a little bit. But it still wasn't getting them to where I wanted, right? That wasn't quite the mastery I wanted. So then, I allowed students, or actually, I worked individually with students using the same program that was mentioned, that was Kami. Because I could work with them in real time. I could highlight something, I could talk to them individually, I could type out to them, and I worked with them individually on their correction to get them to where they needed to be. So after we did that, their quiz average prior was in that 80 range. After a week of daily correction, of direct reteaching to individualized students, because they all make different mistakes, I was able to get their class, their quiz average up to like a 95. And I know grades aren't end-all, be-all, but it helps us, let us know if they've mastered the topic. So in this, that's what we did. We just, every day, with individualized reteaching of a topic. I would teach, they would do a classwork, and then I would individually go help them with their mistakes that they were making. So I had some conclusions to this and I had some like things on this. So the biggest thing that I found, and the biggest thing that was in all the research, was that time given in class to make corrections had a greater impact on mastery. Again, the time in class. Students need to be given time to do these. Prior to introducing this, they were given their own time. They could go home and do it. It wasn't getting done. The individual instruction. When students receive detailed individual reteaching or correction, they performed better. So again, instead of just me marking it wrong and giving them in-time class to fix it on their own, I had to reteach them. I had to help them find out where their mistakes were and buy them to correct that. Things to consider, as you know, as a good mathematician, statistician, right? Because data could be skewed, given to the prior school year, okay? Were kids more attentive, were they less attentive? Were this hybrid in and out? Smaller class size helped make this possible. Again, I had one-third of the normal class size that I usually would have had for this class. So that really helped that I could have talked to each kid in those moments. And then my biggest question is, how can I implement this in a larger class? And possibly a larger class with less time? Because I do teach larger classes that aren't given that double period and those students still make the same mistakes, but the time in class with the individual instruction isn't there to help them. And then when I talked to the students and surveyed the students, they were very appreciative of the reteaching and the re-instruction that I gave them. So in all, it's just, that's all.
Hey, hello, I'm Steve Smith. I'm an arts science special high school. And today I'm going to talk to you about self-replating through metacognitive prompting. Specifically, how to optimize self-replating using metacognitive prompting. So first, let's start off with, what is metacognition? Education research finds metacognition as a student's awareness of their comprehension or performance during or shortly after in academic tasks. More simply put, it's thinking about having things. Now, this might intuitively sound like a great idea for education, right? If we can get our kids thinking about how they're approaching a problem, how they're solving problems and drawing conclusions, that should be, you know, great for their education, right? But let's not jump to any conclusions, let's see what the research has to say. Up here, I have four separate research articles from four different time periods. They're actually looking at four different age groups. And they all generally come to the same conclusion stating that metacognition is beneficial for education, specifically stating that metacognitive practices are good for learning comprehension, for students' abilities to use cognitive practices. And Erman, 2006, the second one there, went as far as to say, metacognitive abilities was a better indicator of mathematical success than general intelligence alone. So the research says it's there and it works. But how do we apply it to our classroom? So let me talk to you about what I did. I had a boost evaluation reflection, that's a screenshot of the assignment over there, and students had to follow this procedure. They, number one, had to determine the reason the question was missed. And they had listed one through five up there. I have lack of knowledge, lack of understanding. Two, three, I misread or misunderstood the question. Four, brain fart, or five, some other reason. After students determined why the question was missed, they had to tally in that frequency column there, how many times you missed a specific question for that reason. For example, if a student missed six questions because they misunderstood or misread the question, well, then they could go through and, Sherman, I need to work on this. I need to practice how I'm understanding, how I'm reading the question. Lastly, students needed to provide me with the necessary knowledge and information and correctly answer the question. I did perform a little bit of an investigation with this where I made a metacognitive group. The metacognitive group performed the activity on the previous slide and I had a control group. The control group just did test corrections, how you might typically do them. They got their assignment back, they looked at the questions they got wrong, figured out what the right answer was, and gave that to me. So on a subsequent exam, using the same content, just different questions, the control group had 29 participants and had a general increase, or an increase of 26, 2.6%, which is expected because they did have more exposure, more time to content. However, we're looking at how to optimize learning self-replating. So the metacognitive group had 33 participants. They had an increase of 8%, which is significantly larger than 2%. Traditionally, student feedback provided, said that they did enjoy this. The one student said, yes, the correction activity helps me think about how I answer the question. And that's exactly what we're looking for here. So in conclusion, metacognitive prompting during self-replating has shown to be more effective than without. That's what the research had, that's what I find as well. My final thoughts on the topic is metacognition is a skill. Skill need deliberate practice in order to develop it. I think that students should be immersed in cognitive activities from a young age and use it throughout their educational career. That's all I got for you.
I just wanted to really thank all of you. This has been such an incredibly difficult year. And the fact that they had a choice. They could have chosen to not do it this year and to do it next year. We can give them that opportunity. But these teachers out here made a decision to do it this year. So I want to commend you for that. But all the things that you're talking about, they just resonate so much with me. Because these are the things that we've been talking about over the years. Homework, metacognition, collaborative learning. And the fact that you went out of your way to put this in place during probably the most difficult year we've ever had is really to be extended. And I'd love to talk to you about the homework a little bit more. We did the homework because I, I think you remember, we put a homework policy in place a couple of years ago. But we have a lot more work to do with homework and grading. So I appreciate that to you. And you all did a great job, so thank you.
I just want to say, this is like one of my favorite nights, natural night. But you never come back. So Steve, you got me thinking about thinking. And maybe we can tap into our group mindset over here. And maybe next year, we can bring back somebody from a couple of years ago and kind of give us an update on what they did their presentation on and whether they've continued it. Because I, like, it's very exciting, but I'd like to know like two years from now, like, if it still is exciting, you know? It's really great information. So again, that, that's very rich.
Spill my line from last year. I always said this is my favorite thing. So I just want to, on the record, that my line ran. But anytime we have you for us in schools, it is, that's my important. I just want to thank, I think that I have this right. Lisa Chilis Murphy, along with the BCTA, were with us in place. And I'm never tired of saying that I don't, I know that there's no place that does it better than the guys here. And I'm not sure there's any place that does it as well. So I want to thank the leadership for continuing. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of time. I'd be, it's like you don't have time, especially here. So certainly appreciate that you, all you folks is, show that everything is perfect. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our regular agenda. At this time, I would like to get a motion to go into executive session, starts personal matters. No action will be taken after executive session. So we'll turn the meeting when we come out. Like, if I get a motion to go into executive session, Sarah, second? Daniel, I'm Famer.
Aye.
Over. Seven zero, thank you. We're going to go into executive session. Forty-one.